County Administrator, you are recognized.
Mayor, members of the board, this afternoon's workshop and Vice Mayor Weiss, Vice Weiss, we're here to talk about affordable workforce housing. Again, this is an issue that we're top of mind for all of us. It has been top of mind for me personally since 2000 when we did a study that reflected we would be 66,000 short by build out of 2025. We came back and we did another study in 2005 that projected we would be 99,000 short by build out of 2035. So at that point, our, the board at the time directed us to move forward with developing a workforce housing program. We moved forward with developing such a program when Patrick had curly hair, thick, and I had long, dark hair. So we came forward in 2007, the board approved the workforce housing agreement. We then came back and modified that program in 10 because the market crashed and our development community said, you know, this is, we need you to make some adjustments. So we did, we took more teeth out of the program. We continue to work with all parties and try to move forward with workforce housing. It is a challenge. As we all know, we live in paradise and people want to move here. It's a two-edged sword. As your administrator and property values going up, that definitely lightens my heart. However, the other bleeding side of it is that we're pricing ourselves out of the market when it comes to housing. And of course, this latest increase does not help us. We kind of moved away from a balance between rental and ownership and went more toward rental. And right now, our rents are through the sky, through the roof. And people are increasing rents drastically. And so it's now becoming even more of an issue. We have a lot of our older housing stock in our communities that people, that have been in people's families for a while. We are working, and you'll see this when we start with the presentations, we are working with those communities to keep those individuals in their homes in those communities through our rehab program as well. So we're using federal dollars to rehab, put new windows in, doors, roofs, air conditionings, just to keep people in their neighborhood so that they will be able to continue and hold that wealth in their family. It is getting more and more difficult. Our fastest growing population, based on the latest data that I have, is our seniors. And so, yes, our seniors. And so we, though, that's a whole nother issue besides workforce housing, that's affordable housing for our seniors. And so we're going to lay out our programs that we have and what we've done with those dollars. And I'm going to start with Dorit Miller, who will give us an overview of the presentation, and then we'll move on to Mr. Rutter and other members that you see before you today.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, and thank you, Ms. Baker, for that broad overview. So the purpose of today's meeting is we, is just to start the conversation about workforce affordable housing, okay? We know it is not an easy solution. So today, what we will do is look at the strategies and the tools that we have been employing and the results of those, okay? Just a lay of the land is what we have been doing. So we will begin with defining what affordable and workforce housing is. There are different discussion going on, but within the framework of housing and HUD, we just want to define so make sure that we are on the same page. We're also going to look at the strategies and the source of funding for housing. And if you look at the table here, this is our cross-functional team as it works. It's a continuation of today's discussion, and so we are bringing all the departments, which is under Palm Beach County, okay, within Palm Beach County, working on affordable housing. So we're going to start with Jonathan, and Jonathan will discuss the section with the federal, state, and local resources, what that is. And Jonathan is the Director of Housing and Economic Development. We also have David Brandt. You have been approving Housing Finance Revenue Bonds. This is David Brandt. He has been with you, with us, for over 30 years. He was a person who actually was involved in the creation of the Housing Finance Authority. So David will speak to the Housing Finance Authority piece. LSA, LSA is the Executive Director of our only CRA district that we have, the West Gate Belvedere area. So he'll talk about what he has been doing to enhance workforce and affordable housing. And then we're going to Patrick. Patrick, my colleague here, he will be heading the section with the Workforce Housing Program, and then we're going to segue into policy considerations. So with that, we will start with Jonathan.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. Thank you all for having us again today. So affordability, the general rule for affordability is that it's housing where an individual or a household is not expending more than 30% of their income toward their rent or their mortgage payments. This is always a big question for, for some, and it's really a point that we stick to and we, we're holding to. I know that as you'll hear discussions in, in the future regarding this, some view it as a guide, but really, it's something that we stick to in order to determine affordability. With our affordable housing programs, when you look at the definition, when using HUD funds, typically HUD funds allow us to go up to 80% of the AMI, and so we deem up to 80% of AMI using HUD funds as affordable. With the state program, the state allows us, when we are funded, the state allows us to go up to 140% of the area median income, and that's considered affordable. Our workforce housing program, again, kind of crosses over both the affordable and workforce category in that we start at 60% of the area median income, and then we'll go up as high as 140% of the area median income. Just for kind of a guide, when you talk about affordable, $68,500 of annual household income for a family of four, that's typically the range and below that you're working with. And then for workforce housing, it ranges from $48,120 up to just over $112,000 for a family of four, and that is what's considered affordable, workforce housing. So why are we here today? We've seen that over the past few years that there has been a disparity in terms of increasing housing costs, whereas household incomes have not increased at the same pace. Back in 2012, and this is kind of a 10-year look at what we've done, back in 2012, usually you would see the rule of thumb is that, you know, someone wouldn't spend more than three times their income to purchase a house. Now you shift or you fast forward to 2021, and you see that it's over six times a person's income or a household's income that they're having to spend if they want to be able to purchase a home here in the county. And it's not just the homeownership opportunity, it's the rents too. You know, the fair market rate for a two-bedroom unit is about just under $1,500, and that's fair market. In order to afford fair market, then you're talking about needing to make about $58,000, just over $58,000 a year, or $28 and change per hour. That's fair market. Now, if you were to look at kind of the average rental rates, you're probably talking closer to $2,000. And so now, when you talk about average versus fair market, now you're talking about a household needing to make about $38 an hour just to afford a rental home here in, in the county.
Commissioner Weiss, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Weiss, go ahead.
Can, can you explain the difference between fair market and average?
So fair market, typically HUD will issue what they'll call is fair market rents, and they'll give it to you based on the number of bedrooms within a home. So at a two-bedroom, they'll say this is typically fair market, at three-bedrooms, and it continues to increase. Typically, that's what you would see, that's what you would hear. But in Palm Beach County, because the housing market is so different, you see that the rental rates that are being charged are far exceed what's considered fair market, where you're hearing the stories of individuals who may have been paying $1,500 or $2,000, and now those rates are, are going up 50 to 100%. The rates are far exceeding what is considered fair market. And now you look at what the actual rental rates are, so that's, that's what you're looking at in terms of the difference.
So is fair market determined by the cost of acquiring the property?
No, it's just the rate that, that HUD will typically provide every year, and I'm sure they'll take a look at your, they'll take a look at the area median income, they'll take a look at a number of different factors in terms of determining fair market rents.
Okay, all right, thanks.
And so again, that's, that's part of the issue that we're, we're looking at. The rents and things that are being charged far exceeds what even would be considered fair market rent. So I want to jump a little bit into some of the programs that we administer in the Department of Housing and Economic Development. The first program is a federal program, the Home Investment Partnerships Program. Over the past 10 years, the department has expended approximately $9.3 million, resulting in the creation of 324 units. And we share with you kind of the breakdown. So with single-family construction, 39 units at 3.5 million, purchase assistance, 38 units at just over 2.2 million, and then for multifamily, you're looking at 247 units at approximately 3.5 million. One of the things to note within our single-family construction within the home program, as with all programs, there are certain federal regulations and things that you have to abide by. And so we have what's called a Community Housing Development Organization Program, or commonly known as a CHODO program. And so our CHODO program or organizations will participate in either single-family construction and/or multifamily development. And so those are some of our nonprofit partners that are working with us. Some of the home-funded projects, just to give you an idea of what we've done, Heron Estates Family Development is a project that's located in the city of Riviera Beach, where 78 units are going to be created, and again, family development in this particular case. We've also funded some scatter sites, single-family home rehabs and purchases, unincorporated county, Palm Springs, you can see the municipalities, the Isles of Pahokee, a partnership that we had with the Pahokee Housing Authority, and then Flagler Station for, for you all that, that drive down Banyan, and you see it right at the corner of Banyan and Tamarin, the project that's going on there. Another program that the county has had great success with is our Neighborhood Stabilization Program. And over the past 10 years, the county has awarded just about $68 million, which has resulted in the creation of just under 600 units. Purchase assistance, and this was really a unique program that the county administers in that we did not just provide second mortgages, but we also provide first mortgages. If you remember, throughout the crisis and the foreclosure crisis, there were lending markets and everything tightened up, and so the county was very forward-thinking in providing the ability to do first mortgages as well as second mortgages with the number of units created. Acquisition of foreclosed properties critical, because as you know, investors were swooping in and buying properties as soon as those properties became available. And so the county was able to get in there and to really help get properties that ultimately went to affordable buyers, and in some cases, there were multifamily units that ultimately transitioned over to some of our nonprofit partners. And then the multifamily development of 329 units for approximately $28 million. What was really invaluable about this particular program is that when the NSP program started, HUD allowed you to go out and get properties, but these were properties that were, had to be purchased below appraised value. So these were properties that the county was able to assist or to purchase below appraised value. And one of our last NSP-funded projects, Mango Cove, which you're probably familiar with, unincorporated West Palm Beach, 36 units that were created as a result of program income that came back in through the NSP program. Our state program, SHIP, over the past 10 years, we've awarded approximately $32 million, resulting in just under 1,500 units created. And when you look at that number, you know, one of the things you can't help but to think about is what if we were fully funded, and what could, you know, what more could we have done? And so in this particular program, again, we've provided some first and second mortgages, 432 individuals were able to realize the purchase of a home, 23 million provided for that program. Foreclosure prevention, again, this is an opportunity for us to preserve housing, and we've seen through, you know, the foreclosure crisis and even with our COVID pandemic, the need to preserve housing is important. Our housing rehabilitation, again, another activity that we use to preserve housing, 161 individuals had their homes rehabilitated. And then our multifamily development, 813 units at the 1.1, approximately $1 million. And again, some of our SHIP-funded projects, Homes at Tamarin, right here in West Palm Beach, Heron Estates, another project that's funded in the city of Riviera Beach, this is their senior development. Earlier, we talked about a family development, this is their senior development. And then Banyan Court, project that's funded in the city of Lake Worth Beach. Other local resources that we, as the county, provide, impact fee assistance, 50%, of the impact fee investment earnings are set aside for affordable housing. And so those dollars, every year, we put out toward affordable housing projects. Funds are provided as credits toward the roads, parks, and the public building impact fees. Single-family and multifamily projects can be developed using these dollars. And over time, over the, since the inception of the program, you're talking about just over $5 million have been awarded for the creation of 2,172 units. The challenging part here is that not all of these units have gone forward or may go forward. As these projects, you know, they look at timing, timing becomes an issue. If ultimately their costs are increasing, some of them may even make the option of going from affordable to market in order to just make sure that they can recoup costs. And so, you know, that's one of the things to just take in consideration with regards to our impact fee program. And it's really a gap financing tool. Projects that we've helped to, to provide gap financing with, Ocean Breeze in the, the city of Boynton Beach, and then also Banyan Court. They'll use the dollars that we provide to the, here, to leverage, obviously, a greater source of, of funding. And that's really where, where we operate most at when it comes to the developers, whether it's for-profit or nonprofit developers, it's providing the guidance, gap financing that allows them to leverage funds, whether it is other local, state, or federal dollars to bring into the county to bring some of these projects to fruition. Of late, over the, of the past two years, with regards to our CARES Act funding, approximately $38 million has assisted just over 13.6, or about 13.7 thousand households. Our rental eviction program, over $22 million were used to assist 11,857 homes. Our mortgage and foreclosure prevention, 12 and a half million was spent to assist over 1,600 households, and then with the emergency repair, 2.8 million used to assist approximately 217 households. Other DHD federal, state, federal and local resources include the DRI, Disaster Recovery Initiative, where the county provided rehabilitation of storm damages, replacement housing, and some hardening. Additionally, and you'll hear more about later, is our workforce housing program, where we provide assistance for workforce housing buyers, and then you'll also see discussion or hear discussion on our multifamily progress. And so, over 10 years, what have we done? Approximately $156 million was awarded, and approximately 6,500 households were assisted. And, and when you break that down a little bit further, for the homeowner-related assistance, 87 million, approximately, 56% was used to assist 3,100 units. Rental assistance was provided, and the rental assistance is really for, again, you're talking about our developers, multifamily developers, for-profit and nonprofit. $68 million were awarded to them, 44% of the dollars, and it was used to assist 3,328 units, ultimately 51% of the units created. Again, 156 million over a 10-year period, 6,500 homes assisted. And this is just a different look at that in the numbers, to show you how much went toward construction, how much went toward rehabilitation, acquisition and homebuyer assistance, as well as mortgage foreclosure prevention assistance. And so again, the same information, just looked at a little differently. And this here is really just an overview of how those dollars were spent. You'll see on the left-hand side and the different programs that we have provided, housing-related dollars from CDBG all the way down to our others, which will include Universal Housing Trusts and even some ad valorem dollars. And then on the right-hand side, a, a different breakout. You'll see here the number of homeowners and approximately how much we have provided toward homeowners, which would have been purchase assistance, housing rehabilitation, foreclosure prevention. Approximately 49% of the dollars went toward homeowners. The county has awarded approximately $28 million to our for-profit developers. We've awarded approximately $34 million to our not-for-profit developers, and then just over 17 million to the public housing authorities that we partner with and work with throughout the county. And so what's coming next? Next, we are working with our American Rescue Plan dollars. The commission has allowed us to set aside $60 million, and we will be in that program discussing the Brooks subdivision, county-owned development within the city of Riviera Beach. We'll be looking at housing rehabilitation. We'll also be looking at an infill replacement housing program where we will build on county-owned lots. And you talk about, you know, really what's different? It's now we're looking at opportunities to, to build on county-owned property, and then after those homes have been constructed, then we take a look at the homes that are in the worst condition, that are beyond repair in the county, and then we look to do a house swap, where we'll sell the infill housing home that's developed to an individual whose home is no longer habitable. And we'll look to do a infill replacement housing program. And then we have our affordable workforce housing development, where we're looking at exploring projects, again, on county-owned property.
Jonathan, can I just stop you a second?
Yes, sir.
On these projects that you're doing, the rehabilitations or replacements, is there a requirement that they hold on to the, the title of those properties like we're doing on the other projects? I mean, what are, what are the obligations of the owners in these?
Yes, sir. We're putting deed, we're placing deed restrictions on all of the properties that we assist, and typically-
Even the rehabilitations?
Even on the rehabilitation, yes, sir. Yes, sir.
And their obligation is 30 years, or?
Yes, sir, 30 years for the deed restrictions. And again, it's, it's really an opportunity for us to preserve affordable workforce housing, because what we've seen is that the housing prices are gone, and as soon as people see an opportunity, you know, we may lose it. And we don't want to lose any of our affordable workforce housing.
Okay, thank you.
They are, Mayor, if I may, they are allowed to sell within that 30-year period, but they must sell to another family or a person within that eligible category. And that costs, they continue to build some wealth because as HUD continues to increase those particular categories, they can sell up to that amount to a family within that same category.
Do we know what the average appreciation is during that period, or?
I do not, but we can get that.
We don't, and this is going to be an interesting one, because, you know, the houses that we're assisting, at least our start, are going to be unincorporated Palm Beach County. So we'll, we'll get a chance to really gauge that and report back on how that program is going to, is, is working. And then the commission, we've-
Sorry, may I?
You may.
Thank you. I had actually stopped, and one of the questions that I wrote here was, when we're doing, when we're spending the dollars that we have, are we spending them in unincorporated areas only, or are we helping with municipalities?
That's a great question. So the, the dollars are spent countywide. If we are spending dollars within municipalities, the first thing we do is check to see if they're an entitlement city, if they're already receiving their own funds. If they are receiving their own funds, then we're looking for a match. There are a number of municipalities that do not receive their own funds, and so as part of our agreement with them and our locals and with HUD, we will spend monies in those communities as well.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Also, and, and the commission has had a number of different discussions on the infrastructure sales tax. Just at a high level, there are four different strategies that we're looking at, our cottage homes, our tax deed and incentive funding, our mixed income development, and municipal incentive funding. And just to kind of give you an idea of where we are, cottage homes is ongoing, $3.97 million has been, is allocated under contract with the West Palm Beach Housing Authority. Our tax deed and incentive program is ongoing. Our mixed income development, the fund accrual is in process. And then for the municipal incentive funding, the accrual has yet to commence. And so as the dollars grow, right now, as of January, we're at 15.3 million. As the dollars continue to grow, you'll start to see other parts of the project move forward. Okay? And Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, at this time, I will turn it over to David Brandt.
Yeah, before you present, let me, let Vice Mayor make a question.
Mr. Brown, a question for you on, so when you talk about the $156 million over to the 10 years, is that not, that doesn't include the IST?
That does not include the IST or the ARPA.
Or the ARPA, or the CARES.
Or the, or the CARES, and it does not include Housing Finance Authority or the, or the Belga, the, the West Gate Belvedere CRA. This is just strictly the dollars that came through the Department of Housing and Economic Development.
Okay, because when I, I looked at your, I looked at the slide presentation yesterday, so we don't have a total on what we've spent in the last 10 years from all sources?
We, we will have them by department, so, or, or organization. So the Housing Finance Authority, the West Gate Belvedere CRA, and as well as the other departments can share, and then we can, we can get you a total from there.
Might be helpful while we're talking if somebody can pull that number together. Thanks.
Commissioner Bernard?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess I have some questions in regards to this part of the slide. So, Mr. Jonathan, you had mentioned, what was the shortage in 2000? Not Jonathan, I think Ms. Baker, you had said that we were 66,000 short?
We had an outside consultant perform the study. In 2000, it was projected to be 66,000 short by 2025, which was the projected build-out date at that point.
And then, you said 2005?
2009, I'm sorry, 2005, it was projected to be 99,000 short by build-out, which I think was pushed out to 2035 at that point.
And in 2022, what are we looking at right now?
We, the county did those two studies, we have not done another study. However, I do know that the Housing Leadership Council actually contracted with FIU, I want to say, and it was 100-plus thousand units over, and that was a couple of years ago.
Okay, so it says like we're 100,000 units short?
Yeah, we're, yes, definitely, easily.
I have a question for you, Mr. Jonathan, on, just to make sure I understand, going to your slide five, like, so for the single-family, it says for the single-family construction on, on slide five, we created 39 units, and that cost us 3.5 million, and so does that mean that we're spending 91,700, it's over 91,000 per unit?
For that particular strategy, yes. And, and this is where, like I say, it gets a little different, because one of the things we have to adhere to is a Community Housing Development Organization requirement, a HUD requirement. And so there are times where our CHODOS are building single-family homes, or, or developers are coming in and building single-family homes. And so it's, it's, it's a requirement, and so we, we adhere to those requirements, and those organizations are selected via competitive process.
And what's the process with the CHODOS? How do-
So-
What CHODOS is?
The CHODOS are Community Housing Development Organizations, and they are a special type of nonprofit that is established through HUD criteria. And HUD requires certain number of things in terms of how their board is made up, and the citizen participation, so it's a special type of nonprofit organization. Not all nonprofits are CHODOS. They have to apply for the designation. The designation, the application will come through, in our case, the- The designation, the application, will come through, in our case, the county, and in other municipal cases, it'll come through the municipalities. We have to ensure that they meet HUD's requirement to be certified as a CHODO, and if they do, then there are requirements that the county has in setting aside a part of their home funds to meet the needs of that CHODO.
And if I may, based on the regulations, HUD regulations for home funds that we receive, I think it's fifteen percent must go towards CHODO. That is not our decision, okay?
Now, do those CHODOs get other types of assistance in terms of, in those?
Yes, sir. And we've worked with CHODOs who will receive some level of assistance to help, whether it's acquisition or construction, and then those same CHODOs will need to come back to us, at least their buyers, for down payment assistance. They can also leverage their dollars with other dollars if they're able to do that.
So, if they're able to come back to us for purchase assistance, like, you included thirty-eight units for two million dollars, wouldn't some of those people, how are those units counted also as new units that was created?
So, the great question, Commissioner. So, you'll see, as they come back for purchase assistance, it's not going to be just CHODO, it's also going to be our typical purchase assistance program. And when the dollars are provided to an organization, then it will go within the single-family. But if it's provided to an individual, then you're talking about the purchase assistance. So, the more accurate probably depiction of that is thirty-eight individuals.
And so, those thirty-eight individuals, I saw that the average is about fifty-nine thousand dollars per individual. Would those, are those considered new units created also?
Maybe not created, but assisted.
But you're using those as created units, because we're trying to create units. How is that considered as new units, creation of new units?
Great question. And the, so for the creation of the new units, meaning that they were not previously affordable housing units. And so, now, with the assistance from the county, what was not an affordable housing unit is now designated as an affordable housing unit. So, while it may not be new construction, it is the creation or the addition that we're looking at in terms of that.
So, how is that creating, because we have a shortage of units, how we're creating those units? Yes?
When we do the purchase assistance, a lot of them are market rate. We then give them a down payment on that, which then allows us to restrict that unit to a workforce affordable unit at that point. So, it is a, may not be a brand-new unit we just constructed, or someone just constructed, but it is a unit that came off the market side and went up on the restricted side, affordable workforce housing side. So, it counts on that side of the ledger.
Okay.
But we haven't added to the housing stock. We've just moved it on the ledger.
That is correct. That is absolutely correct. It's a net zero.
We need to be clear on that, that we're not...
It's a net zero gain. I one-hundred percent agree with you. But it does keep it, if it's an ownership unit for thirty years, on the affordable workforce side, as opposed to the market continuing to escalate.
So, and then, going to the multifamily development, can you explain how is that created for me?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. So, that particular program, annually, the county will issue RFPs for a number of programs, specifically the HUD program, the home program. And you'll see a number of different RFPs, whether it is for single-family, multifamily development. It really is going to be based on the development type. Typically, we'll have one that'll go toward CHODOs, one RFP that's issued toward CHODOs and CHODOs only, then we'll have another RFP that we issue for development in general.
And then, those, are those new units created, or no?
So, typically, there are, they are new units being created for construction. In some cases, you may have the units being acquired and then rehabilitated.
And so, but those, if I averaged that out, we're spending fourteen thousand per unit?
Yes. So, the cost absolutely is a lot less there because when you're talking about purchase assistance, we also have to do purchase assistance with rehabs. And if the homes don't necessarily pass the HUD's housing quality inspections, we need to add dollars in there to make sure the home is up to current code, and now, you'll see in a lot of our programs, the resiliency piece. And so, yeah, those cost a little more.
Hold on, you lost me. So, explain that to me again.
So, with our purchase assistance, we have purchase assistance with, and we have purchase assistance without rehab. And so, if we are assisting someone to acquire a home, and it's not currently up to code or it needs some repairs, then we will provide dollars for the down payment and closing costs, and then we'll also provide dollars to help them rehab, minor rehab, but rehab nonetheless.
So, with the purchase assistance, like, we're spending fifty-nine thousand per unit, could, is there another pot of dollars that we're also spending?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Each of the strategies that the county deploys includes some level of purchase assistance. And let me rephrase that. Each of the HUD and the state strategies include both purchase assistance strategies.
Okay. Going to slide seven, just on the NSP dollars, I was looking at it, for the purchase assistance, we created a hundred-and-four units, but we spent twenty-one million dollars. That's two-hundred-and-two thousand dollars per unit. Are those new, new construction?
For the NSP program, not new, it's not new construction. NSP program was a, under the Housing and Economic Recovery Act, and it was for the purchase of foreclosed, vacant, and abandoned homes.
So, we spent twenty-one million dollars, but we didn't create a single new unit?
We took units that were unoccupied, that would have been purchased by investors, and we've converted them to affordable housing units that are now, that are now deed restricted.
Okay. On the acquisition of foreclosed properties, it says that we spent, it's a hundred-and-sixty-five units. Explain to me, how does that work, if you don't mind, please?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. So, when we identify units, one of the, one of the great things that the federal government did was, after a while, NSP started, and they saw the investors swooping in and purchasing the properties. So, they created a first-look program, which allowed municipalities to actually have a first opportunity at purchasing certain units before they went on the market. So, in addition to single-family homes, if we saw duplexes, and I believe we've purchased some quads, and eightplexes, and twelve, units, so that way, again, we can make sure we give those units or pass those on to the appropriate housing agency or housing partner, but we make sure that we have affordable housing units that we can use either for homeownership or for rental.
When we acquired those properties, what did we do with those properties?
Ultimately, the properties were disposed of. And again, through a competitive process, or working with the county's community land trust, or other agencies, we would have disposed of those properties through, through that process. And the other thing, Commissioner...
What do you mean by disposed? Did we sell it, or did we, we just gave it? What did we do?
It depends. There were, there were properties that, for the most part, I want to say they were donated, but I'll confirm that because, again, when we're talking about our nonprofit housing partners, the community land trust was a big recipient of most of these county-owned properties that were acquired through this process.
Okay, so these weren't new units, is that correct?
They were not new units, but as mentioned earlier, Commissioner, they were units that became affordable, so we were able to add them to our affordable housing complement.
Okay. So, we spent a hundred-and-fifteen thousand per unit and then donated them?
On average, and take in consideration, when you're talking about the foreclosed, vacant, and abandoned, as people were being foreclosed and forced to leave their homes, these homes were in disrepair. So, it wasn't just acquisition, it's also the rehabilitation.
So, we acquired and then spent more money to fix them?
Yes, sir.
And then donated them?
And then we would donate, and then we would ensure affordable housing for how many ever years at that point was the restriction.
Okay. On the multifamily development, it says we created three-hundred-and-twenty-nine units. Did, on, are those new units created on the multifamily?
For the NSP program, I would say that the vast majority, and I apologize, Commissioner, because some of that happened before I returned, was, was existing units that we would have assisted with in terms of rehabilitation and acquisition.
So, do we know whether or not we created new units with those, let's say, sixty-seven million dollars that we spent? Did we create new units with those? Or how would we know?
I would, and I can confirm with staff and follow back up with you, I would assume that most of the units were existing units because the goal of the program was to, to take the foreclosed, vacant, and abandoned properties and make them usable.
Okay, so sixty-seven million, but no units were created?
Probably. No, no new units were probably constructed, but affordable workforce housing units were gained.
Okay. I have one more question, Mr. Mayor, just.
I think the county administrator just wanted to interject, if you don't mind.
No, I think Jonathan, you know, he clarified, they may not be brand-new construction, but they were new units put, again, on the ledger for workforce affordable housing and being restricted for a period of time. Otherwise, if you'll remember in oh-seven, oh-eight, when the market was extremely high in, in communities, that the homes were valued at, you know, ninety thousand dollars, they were selling for two-hundred thousand. And people that we had restrictions came in, wrote us checks, so that they could pay us off and then sell the unit to a market, to the market rate. So, there is a difference between, and I, I understand exactly what Commissioner Bernard is getting at, and I agree, because we want to build, not remain neutral. But these units...
Not even being neutral because we're taking those five-hundred-and-ninety-eight units out of the marketplace. So, we're taking it out of the free marketplace.
That's correct.
Moving them into a protected area so that we can keep them in affordable workforce housing.
That is...
But we are now adversely impacting the marketplace by pulling those units out.
But just...
We're just not getting any traction here.
I agree with you. However, if we had not pulled those five-hundred-and-ninety-eight units off the market, we would not have five-hundred-and-ninety-eight units that are affordable, that we can help control the cost of those units. And we've got five-hundred-and-ninety-eight individuals or families in those market, I mean, in the restricted units.
And we're still a hundred thousand behind.
That is absolutely correct. We have got to gain, if we're investing this money, we've got to gain. But again, please keep in mind, these are federal resources, and the feds, for the most part, tell us how to design these programs and spend the money. We are a high-valued county, and so, what other counties could do with these dollars is far more than what we are able to do when our average home price is half a million dollars. So, what we're trying to do is still retain affordable units, but we really need to significantly increase the number of new constructed units that are affordable and workforce.
I didn't mean to interrupt you, Commissioner Bernard.
I'm sorry, Commissioner.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just, I, just going to slide nine, on the purchase assistance, it says first and second mortgages. So, we've spent four, I guess we've created four-hundred-and-thirty-two units on purchase assistance, is that correct?
Commissioner, we have, we've helped four-hundred-and-thirty-two families purchase units.
And that's about fifty-three thousand per, per unit?
Yes, sir. And so, between first mortgages, second mortgages, and those mortgages with and without rehab, you're looking at that combined total.
And so, those didn't create any new units?
For the purchase assistance, some of those could have been new units. And I guess, kind of clarify where we are in terms of new units, we've created with the dollars constructed, approximately one-thousand-four-hundred-and-eighty-two units for about forty million, forty-one million of the one point, the hundred-and-fifty-six million. So, so about fifteen-hundred units out of the sixty-five-hundred units were, were new created.
Okay. On the multi, I'm just going to go to the multifamily development. On, on, this is an interesting thing to me. It says that eight-hundred-and-thirteen units were created under that scenario. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And would those be most likely new units created by the multifamily developer?
Yeah, those, yes, sir. Those would be, for the most part, new units, unless, again, we were dealing with rehabilitation.
And what's, and so, the average cost for those new units, that those developers created, came out to be an average of one-thousand-four-hundred-and-thirty-seven dollars and ninety-eight cents?
Yes, sir.
So, from the multifamily side, that where they can create more units, we're using less money to leverage to create those units, but then we're spending fifty, forty, seventy, a hundred-and-fifteen thousand dollars to create other type of housing. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor?
I just want to follow up on Commissioner Bernard's line of questioning, and it just leads me to, so we talk about a hundred thousand units plus is, is the need. How many at each stratification level do we need at, at what income levels? So, how many at sixty, how many at, you know, I don't know what the breaks are, where you normally break them, if it's every ten percent of AMI, but how many? It seems to me we're attacking the problem sort of backwards, that we should start from where we, what we need to create, what needs to be created, and then back into how you're going to, how you're going to pay for it.
When we first started working on the housing, Patrick was younger.
Patrick was younger, so he might remember better, but when we started working on this, actually, we went from, we were sixty percent for workforce housing, sixty percent to a hundred-and-twenty. Then, we added as a compromise, and to get this through the system, that the top level from one-twenty-one to a hundred-and-forty percent of the median income, which is really market rate. So, when we're working with developers and we're pushing down, then if we push it, if we look at the sixty percent to a hundred-and-twenty percent, that is where we need the most assistance. Now, I'm separating affordable housing, I mean, yeah, affordable housing, which runs the gamut from zero to eighty percent, depending on HUD guidelines, and it overlaps with the sixty to the eighty. But that bulk is where we need to focus the most on workforce housing, between the sixty, the hundred-and-twenty.
But I guess my, if, if a unit, and I, you know, just, if you talk to, you know, you figure a multifamily unit, if it costs you two-hundred thousand to build it, what do you need to subsidize that in order to make that unit affordable? How many of them do we need? How much is this going to cost? You know, and from there, we can, we can actually draw up a plan on how to do it, but if we don't know where we want to end up and what we need to be at, I think we're sort of, we're, we're starting, we should be looking from the top down as to what we need to do to put a plan together for it because we've got, we've got these ideas and so forth, but clearly, we're falling well short, and the market is moving much faster than we can react.
Absolutely. I think that what we are looking at now, actually, asked staff to provide me with overview of surplus. When the market was extremely hot back in, starting in oh-eight, we ended up disposing of roughly a hundred-and-eighty sites, equating to roughly eighty acres. And then, most of those dispositions occurred in oh-eight, ten, thirteen, and fifteen, where we disposed of surplus properties because people were knocking on the door saying, "We need the properties." So, we've got limited surplus properties. The two properties that we are working on currently to make available to a for-profit or nonprofit, that I will be recommending to this board, that we put all workforce affordable housing on those properties, to create the synergy of what we need. We need hundreds of units. And so, instead of disposing of it to development, and a percentage of those go for market, and then a smaller percentage go for workforce affordable, that's not the overall goal because we're so far behind the eight ball. All of those, I will be recommending to this board to have a variety of incomes across the board that fit into the workforce affordable housing categories on those two properties that we have left, that we have added. that we have left, that we have identified. And so we're working to get through the minutia so they're in a position we can actually bid them out and then get the appropriate nonprofit or for-profit developer to come in. When we control the property and where the board gives us direction to move, and that means, then we actually had a conversation with the developer that reached out to us, I knew way back when, that was an affordable developer. They left our county when the market got hot and the price of land was just too much. They left our community. They're now looking to come back. And so we're, you know, we have to bid out everything, no one developer gets it. But we would be in a position to do exactly what you and Commissioner Bernard are talking about, and that's looking up to say, "How many units are you going to put on the ground? New units, not replacement units, not units that exist today and we're going to put it on a different side of the ledger, but actual new constructed units." And that's what we're looking to do. Did I answer your question?
Well, with all due respect, not really.
Okay. That's okay. I want to make sure I answer it.
It's really one of saying, okay, you have a hundred thousand units. You need, you know, of them, eighty percent of them need to be in that sixty to eighty percent range, the other twenty can be above. I don't know what that number is. That's what I'm asking you all for.
I don't know sitting here today.
And I think, and I think until we do, then we know what the subsidy is going to be required for each one of those units, and we, you back into a number-
Right.
-of what this is going to, what it's going to cost. And from one, once you figure out how it's going, what it's going to cost, then you can start to figure out how you're going to pay for it.
This board gave us direction a couple of meetings ago through Commissioner Bernard to work with the Housing Leadership Council more so than what was being done. And so that's part of it, to come up with that plan. And so we'll be definitely more involved, I will be personally more involved in it, to come up with that plan. And again, it depends on the average salary, the average household with single family. We have to look at all of those factors as well as our elderly. And what that household will look like.
Before I recognize Commissioner Marino, long before any one of us got up here, this was obviously recognized as a problem. It hasn't gotten better. In fact, it's got much worse. I, like Commissioner Bernard, have a great deal of difficulty with so few units being added. I'm not minimizing the fact that we have rehabilitated, we've kept from foreclosure, we have done things that have preserved units and moved them on to the other side of the ledger. But that didn't add housing. And I think that after twenty years of this, there is a cause to step back and say, "We're not getting any progress. What can we do to show progress?" And I'm just, I don't have an answer, but I know that what we've done ain't the answer.
I agree with you.
Okay. Commissioner Marino?
Thank you. Jonathan, when you said donate, I realize the county does not want to be a landlord, we don't want to be a realtor, we don't want to be in the business, but also if we're going to make an investment, we have to be able to get a return on the investment so that we can then reinvest. So when you say donate, could you please explain to me better what you mean by donate? Where is it going? How are they, how are, how is it getting leveraged?
Yes. So for the nonprofit organizations that we're talking about, whether it's a neighborhood renaissance, a community land trust, organizations like that, if they, or Riviera Beach CDC, I think one of the recent ones where there was a property identified in the city of Riviera Beach, and ultimately it became county-owned. And the city of Riviera Beach CDC had a plan to get, to secure that home and to redevelop it. The home was beyond repair, so the county donated the home, they demolished it, and I want to say two months ago, they created and developed a solar home now on that site, about a thousand square feet. And so in that particular case, donating the property, it did not necessarily, wasn't inhabitable, and it created a new unit or a, demolished and rebuilt a new unit there. Typically, we look to work with the nonprofit agencies that are producing housing in our community, and we look to see how they can take, take control of this particular property. We preserve affordability long-term, so that way we're gaining affordable units. And whether through competitive process or a request to the county is how those properties ultimately get donated. Ultimately, it comes through the board for final approval, but that's how that process works.
Thank you.
Is all this money outright grants, or is some of it revolving in that we give money and we get money back and we're able to reuse that money?
Yes, sir. So with, for second mortgages, down payment assistance, those are usually grants. You stay in the home for fifteen, thirty years, whatever the restriction is, then it's forgiven. It's not proradic forgiven over the time. You need to stay in that home all, that whole time for that thirty-year period, then it's forgiven. If you move out, then it comes back. We do first mortgage loans also for home buyers, and those are dollars that come back in that allow us to, to create program income. For instance, we've done that with NSP, and that's how we're going to get to the Gramercy Park project that Commissioner Bernard talked about. It's the program income that's generated through that program. That's also how we're helping Village of Valor, the Veterans Program, again, through the program income. Our developers also, we provide loans to them. Sometimes the loans are cash flow dependent, and other times they're one percent loans.
Are we taking full advantage of the nonprofits out there that are willing to get involved in the rehabilitation of these properties versus us doing it? I mean, I'm just wondering, and then I, I can't tell you how many times I bump into people like Habitat for Humanity, says, "Please, we want to do something. We need either property, we need projects that we can work on." And I'm sitting here looking at, you know, we're taking credit for two-thousand-plus units of rehabilitation. Why us and not them?
With regards to rehabilitation, typically, organizations will work on properties that they own. But if we're dealing with an individual who owns their own property, then we have to competitively, using the state or federal guidelines, we have to competitively procure a contractor to do that work.
I thought when you were explaining it before, you were talking about some of these properties being uninhabitable and that we would then bring them up to a habitable state. Does that mean that we're then just handing it back to the person who owned that property?
No, if it's a, if it's a housing rehab, so if we want our seniors to age in place, which we've done before, yes, sir, we'll go in and we'll do all of the mobility sensory work, the barrier-free work for them, their roof work, or whatever they need, so that way they can age in place. So we'll do that for them. We do it for families as well. If their homes are beyond repair, code issues, life, health, safety issues, yes, sir, we'll go in and we'll fix them so that way we can preserve those homes and they can continue to stay there.
Okay. Commissioner Sacks?
This is a tough issue, and it's multifaceted and it's complex. I recall years ago, and I applaud, and I know it's difficult for a lot of folks to understand, that sometimes what we need to do is to rehabilitate a house. That way, the residents are, keep that equity of that property, and they stay within their community. We did this a lot in portions of my Senate district, and it doesn't, you don't get a mark on a new unit. However, what we're doing is we are, we are enabling a family to stay in their community, and we are maintaining their equity in that house, which is the most important asset that most of us have. Secondly, though, this is a complex. There are many different facets that are going into this, and at some point, I'm going to, and will, let me now say that if we can at some point, Ms. Baker, have some type of workshop or review of all the different agencies that work with us. I know that the mayor talks about these nonprofits, and they're there. Some of them are veterans organizations, some of them are just nonprofits, state, federal, local. But we need to sort of bring this into a whole synergy of what in the heck is going on with affordable housing here, and to pull in the private developers who are always looking to, to help us so that we can help them. So this is a time and something to think about as we look at the whole universe of how we produce affordable and workforce housing going forward. And thank you for the presentation. Thanks.
Commissioner McKinley?
Yeah, thank you. Ms. Baker, I know that this has been a passion of yours the whole time. I've worked for Palm Beach County. I know you've been trying to get creative on the ideas, and I know I have complained in the past about how slowly things move. I've learned some things over the last couple of years. I think the cottage homes example that we have here, that's funded under the infrastructure sales tax, is probably one of the best examples of how the county can contribute to the stock, the inventory of affordable housing units in Palm Beach County. But I think it's also important to note, I know WGI, through the Business Development Board, volunteered and did an inventory of available publicly-owned lands in Palm Beach County. And by the time they took off everything that had a fire station or had a conservation easement or water, you know, water drainage or something in it, we were down to only about three hundred acres. So I think there's this misperception among some private developers that somehow the county and other local government entities are sitting on this overabundance of publicly-owned land, and that is not the truth. And I think that we need to at least look at some of those parcels and see where we might be able to do more examples of things like the cottage homes. The other issue we have is that, you know, you might be able to build these mixed-income developments or, you know, put those affordable housing units on, but as soon as those, those complexes are wrapped into some sort of condo association, or they're looped into a homeowners' association, those fees alone can price a family out of their residence. And we're not in, and then you got to add in the topic of insurance and some of the decisions that the state has made that are probably more pro-insurance than they are pro-Florida resident. And those are adding. You might be able to afford the unit, but then by the time you go and you try to insure it, all of a sudden, you can't afford to stay there. And then the issue that I have in my district, in the Glades, is there, and I'm trying to work on this with NACO, and it's going to probably take some time because I've got to educate a few folks, but there is an EPA rule that the Florida DEP has to follow, and if you demuck a property, unless you replace that soil on another part of that existing property, or you replace that soil to an adjacent property owner, as soon as you transport it beyond that, it is treated as a hazardous waste and has to be deposited as such. So if you're building a two-thousand-square-foot home, just to demuck the footprint for that two-thousand-square-foot foundation is going to cost you at least twenty-five thousand dollars. You know, and so when people went in and looked at some of the properties that we just rehabbed, where we had to pump up the foundation and do things like that, and they were asking, "Why, why did that cost you two-hundred thousand dollars?" And say, "Well, welcome to doing economic development in the Glades." So what I'm trying to do is get the EPA to bend that rule a little bit because the soil conditions are the same exact soil conditions that we're, the farmers are using to grow. It's naturally occurring organic materials in the soil, and trying to see if we can get some forgiveness, and it helps the farmers by replacing the soils that they're losing at a quicker rate these days. So there are all sorts of things that are complicating the price of housing in Palm Beach County. And I really think, and I think you're going to get there, but the topic really needs to be is, is how do we put some, how do we slow the rate? Most of our families, because of the insurance, because of the HOAs, because of the assessments and the condo associations and all of that, will never be able to afford to buy a home. So they're having to rent, and they're at the mercy of these landlords. So I think the conversation, you know, yes, we need to add to the inventory, that certainly is causing an increase in the prices, but how do we handle what some of these landlords are doing to their tenants right now? And if you'll bear with me for a moment, I just want to read this one, and I asked my friend Stephanie if I could read this. I've been following her stuff on Facebook. So she got priced out of her condo, and she was actually renting a commercial space. She had her own, she's got her own business. She got immediately priced out of that, all in the last year. So then she had to find a place where she could operate her business and afford to live. And she says she's paying three thousand dollars for a two-bedroom, two-bathroom right now. "I had to give my landlord a twenty thousand dollar check to secure the place because it became a bidding war among renters." And what'd she say? Hold on a second. She said, "The only reason I had to move is because my rental, her landlord previous, gave sixty days notice, but they raised her rent one thousand dollars a month in that sixty days to say it was an early bird special. And if she waited the full sixty days to decide what to do, it would go up fifteen hundred dollars a month instead." So she said, "We had no choice but to move, and to be honest, it wasn't any better because we had to cut a check for twenty thousand dollars, plus six months' rent, plus first, last, and security. It was a bidding war of offers, so to secure housing, we had to offer him two-hundred-and-fifty dollars more a month to beat out the northerners offering him a full year in cash upfront." That's what's causing our affordable housing crisis. Thank you.
Proceed.
Okay. At this time, we'll turn it over to David Brandt, the Housing Finance Authority.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, good afternoon. Since Dorit already dated me a little bit, I know you can look at me and know I've been around a long time, but actually, I was a junior associate with the county's financial advisor back in nineteen eighty, when the commission first created the Housing Finance Authority. And I've been associated with those programs of the authority ever since, including as director since two thousand and nine. But just real quickly, the Housing Finance Authority was created the year after the state legislature enacted the Housing Finance Authority law. And that act was the direct result of some provisions in the Internal Revenue Code, specific provisions, that allowed for the issuance of tax-exempt housing revenue bonds for single-family homeownership and for the financing of multifamily rental housing. And just to be clear, since we've been having the discussion about new versus existing housing, the single-family portion of the code does, it's not funding for the creation of new homes. It is to provide mortgage financing for individuals to acquire homes, both new or existing, but it doesn't provide financing for the new construction of housing. The multifamily section of the code is different. It can be done both for new construction as well as acquisition and substantial rehabilitation of existing rental housing facilities. One other thing is that, again, the authority can only issue bonds for those two specific, very specific types of financing. And so, you know, we cannot issue a, what I would call a housing affordability type of bond issue where your intention is to use the proceeds for assistance, for either the creation of new housing or to get people into homes. What housing revenue bonds are, is the proceeds are used to acquire an asset, that asset secures the bonds, repays the bonds in total. There is no other funding source for the Housing Finance Authority, either state, local, or national. And in fact, the only tool in the box, as Ms. Baker would say, is the ability to issue private activity bonds. Now, when the authority first started back in early, back in nineteen eighty, in the early eighties, there was no cap on the issuance of bonds. And for the first five or six years, there's, there was a tremendous amount of bond activity, both for single-family and multifamily. In nineteen eighty-seven, the Congress enacted a limit on the amount of private activity bonds that could be issued, and it's based on population. In the state of Florida, a portion of that allocation goes for specific uses at the state level, and then the rest is distributed among the counties, again, on, based on population. among the counties, again, on, based on population. For Palm Beach County, for 2022, our private activity bond allocation amount is just under $79 million. So where do we, where do developers go from here with respect to multifamily bond financing? Back in the day, when rates were exceedingly high, and in the early 80s, they were double-digit, just the advantage of the lower rate on municipal bonds was enough to provide significant, enough to provide financing for a multifamily project. That, however, changed by the mid-1990s, and in reaction to that, the state created the Sodowsky Trust Fund in 1992, and started providing, made a program available from the state documentary stamp tax called the Sale Program, State Department Housing Loan Program. In the early days, developers could get by with requesting $5,000 or $6,000 per unit. In the last two or three years, the funding level to close the gap on a multifamily bond project is closer to $60,000 or $65,000 per unit. And again, for projects that are financed through the Housing Finance Authority, multifamily projects, the tax code requires that either, the developer make an election that either 20% of the units have to be rented to people at 50% median, or 40% at 60%. There is no cap under the bond code for rents. However, there is another provision in the code that created what's called the Housing Tax Credit. And there are two forms of housing tax credits that are used for multifamily bond financing. One is the 9% credit. That is administered solely by the Florida Housing Finance Corporation. It is, the amount of credit is, again, based on the population of the state, and there is also then a 4% low-income housing tax credit. That credit is tied to projects that are financed with the proceeds from a tax-exempt bond issue. And what that housing tax credit does, it provides an up to 4% a year for 10-year, 10-years, credit against the owner of that or the recipient of that tax credit, against their federal income tax liability. What the industry has done is that they've syndicated those tax credits. The limited partner in a project is a recipient of those tax credits. In return, they pay an amount to the developer, and we've seen those prices range from the low $0.80 to as much as a dollar or more for every dollar of tax credit. You kind of wonder why would, you know, why would a potential taxpayer pay more than a dollar for a credit they're going to receive over a 10-year period? Part of that reason is because, as a partial owner of the project, when the property is sold, which is typically after 15 years, they get to receive an interest in the proceeds from the sale of the project, which can be obviously substantial. We've seen values for multifamily rental projects increase dramatically over the past even four or five years. So between the 4% low housing, low-income housing tax credit, you can get maybe 35% of the capital costs of the project financed through that mechanism alone. Bonds will, bonds basically will get you somewhere between another 40% to 45% of the capital requirements for the project. That still leaves a substantial gap. And that gap has been historically provided from one of, just a couple of sources. The State Department Incentive Loan Program through Florida Housing. That's a competitive program. Palm Beach County generally gets no more than $5 or $6 million a year. One project, maybe between 80 and 110 units that can be financed with that. Or the other major source of funding has come from either community redevelopment agencies who have contributed cash to transactions. The county has provided NSP funding in the past for multifamily bond financings that were done by the Housing Finance Authority. And what we saw in the last 10 years, the time period that we were looking at here and asking to present today, we've seen the Palm Beach County Housing Authority, the West Palm Housing Authority, Riviera Beach, as well as Delray Beach Housing Authorities. They have all redeveloped former public housing properties, and generally what would happen is HUD would pay for the cost of demolition. Those properties would then be conveyed into the partnership that was going to own the new redeveloped multifamily project, and that type of contribution sometimes is close enough to get a transaction financed. You ask, you know, what would it take to generate additional new units? At 60% of median income, again, we're looking at probably somewhere in that $60,000 to $70,000 a unit to make a project work with today's costs. On the single-family side, originally, the authority did bonds for the first, the first 25 years of its existence, and those bond programs actually generated some rather significant amounts of income to the authority over that period of time, which was then used to create a down payment assistance second mortgage program in connection with homeownership acquisition. And you can see from, I guess, our, the second slide, Jonathan, in the last, since 2012, the authority has been part of a consortium, a multi-county Housing Finance Authority program, where the first mortgage financing is done through what's called a TBA program, which is a taxable program rather than tax-exempt. The mortgage rates today are very comparable to what you could do with a tax-exempt program, but in this case, we've provided down payment assistance second mortgages. Generally, well, they're up to $10,000. They are repayable. After 30 years, if the house is sold, if the first mortgage is refinanced, or if the home buyer no longer maintains that residence as their personal residence, they have to repay it. It's zero interest, but what happens is when those amounts come back, because the typical average life of a first mortgage loan is between seven and eight years, we see we've done a tremendous amount of recycling of those dollars over time. We did have one other program for homeownership. It was called a Mortgage Credit Certificate Program. You can see the numbers that were, that resulted from issuing mortgage credit certificates. The, there were two things that happened with that. One, it requires a tremendous amount of private activity bond allocation to convert to mortgage credit certificates. It's done on a four-to-one basis. What we've seen, particularly over the last couple of years, is, you know, just diminished loan originations under both this and our Down Payment Assistance Program. They're done through private lending institutions. The Housing Finance Authority does not underwrite loans itself, but what we're getting is feedback, basically, is the kinds of things you hear every day. Either there are cash bidders that come in and swoop up properties as soon as they become available, and the other thing is, as we've seen with the rise in the average sales price, people at these income levels are just getting priced out of the marketplace.
So Mayor, before Eliza jumps in, I just want to take a quick second and identify, obviously, Westgate CRA, I think Dort mentioned that earlier. Westgate CRA resides in unincorporated Palm Beach County. Within our land development code, Westgate has its own subset of regulations, almost, and we effectively implement their master plan, and as they modify it, made changes through the years. And in my nearing 20 years with the county now, I've gone through a number of different changes and implemented things that they've done, and these relate to their property development regulations. In many cases, they've had a bonus density pool that's been available, and other benefits that are made available only to Westgate. And I think it's great for those of us who've been around a while to see this really is, you know, Eliza talked to you about the successes they're having. I think some of you would remember from your Thursdays, seeing any given gas station or other things on the non-residential properties within the CRA area, but also now our residential success is really beginning to occur as well, and all the hard work that they've put into it, especially on the infrastructure side, and beginning to reap those benefits. So just want to call your attention to, you know, the specificities that Westgate represents. So with that, ask Eliza to jump in.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Rutter. Good afternoon, Mayor and Vice Mayor and Commissioners. The CRA also has a mandate beside public infrastructure to also do housing. And in our plan, we have a housing strategy. We use land assembly. That's where we use some of our TIF funds, some of our annual budget to acquire either vacant land or dilapidated houses. We use them to build houses ourselves, or turn them over to nonprofits or developers to build some housing units. We do some new construction in-house, working with other developers. We also have the Neighborhood Preservation Grant Program. That's where we give grants to residents, to homeowners, to improve their property. The Site Development Assistance Grant provide some funding to new housing developers. The Bonus Density Program, as Mr. Rutter talked earlier, the CRA has a pool of units that they can distribute to developers to increase their density. On a piece of property that you are entitled to do eight units per acre, you can receive another 22 or another 30 units per acre in that pool to increase your density in exchange for some workforce housing units. We also provide assistance with grants to developers and nonprofits who are working in the area. We work through, with other developers through public-private partnership to keep doing some infill housing development. These are some of the subsidized infill housing development that we have done within the last 10 years. 31 single-family housing units, 80 multifamily units for seniors. We've partnered with Department of Housing and Economic Development, Neighborhood Renaissance, Everbank, Iberia, Wells Fargo, to do those projects. We did receive some funding from the NSP2, from DRI, to do those projects. Commissioner Bernard is not here, but to address these, his questions about new units, the, one of the projects, previous slides, one of the projects on these slides, where we, where we work with the developer, the landmark development, to do those 80 multifamily units. It was only one property, but that, that they turned into 80 units. It's not a 1-4-1 ratio. On the, on the properties below, we, I think on, on the right, on the slide, we, the CRA purchased one property, one house, and we turned it into eight units. So it's not a 1-4-1 ratio. It's true that we bought one house, we demolished it, but we put more than one home in, on that site. Same thing on the next slide. And Pat mentioned that earlier. We work with the ULDC. We work within the code to make some code amendment to allow some type of cottage homes, smaller homes in the area. We, the minimum lot size used to be 50 foot. We've changed the code to reduce it to 25 feet. So now, on a lot that used to have one home, on a 75-foot lot that used to have one home, we are able to put three new homes. In this development on the top, the developer had bought one acre of land that used to have one home, and he was able to put 14 homes on that lot. I know that he bought another one, that was a 100-foot wide lot that had one house. Now he's building another four homes. So by changing the code, we are able to build more new homes on those sites. And we allow people to do duplexes also on smaller homes, and we have a number of those duplexes in the area. In terms of what we're working on going into the future, we have the Green Apartment. It's a 198 unit that's under construction. They just broke ground a couple months ago. Out of the 198 units, they're providing 52 units of workforce housing. That's again, from that bonus density program that Pat helped us put together a few years back. They are allowed to do 30 units per acre on that site, and build those units and provide some workforce housing units on the site. There is also the Autumn Ridge project, the building over 100 units. It's also a low-income housing tax credit, but they've received bonus units from the density pool. They're doing 30 units per acre also on that site. The Palm Key Town Homes, seven units. They have also received additional units from the density pool. And also the Denza Group, it's a project we work, we're working with the Department of Housing and Economic Development. Thirty-six units, still in the planning stage, but they're also going to receive density, increased density from the bonus density program. Those are some of the things that we've worked on in the last 10 years, and a few things that we are working on looking into the future. So the code, the code amendment have allowed us to do more units on a single-family lot, and also do increased density on the, on these multifamily projects. We did receive some NSP funding, and the NSP funding was not a grant. It was, it contributed to some of the subsidies that was passed on to the, to the buyers, but when we sold those units, the program income was sent back to the county to continue housing development activities. So those are some of the things that we work in, in the Westgate area.
Mayor, good afternoon, and we'll wrap up this portion at least, as I talk about workforce housing. And I would tell you, it's a program that has the capacity here in this discussion for a while now, has the capacity to do just what's been brought up, creating more units, putting them on the ground, new units. We absolutely have that capacity in the program to do so. It's a program that's been responsive for, going on 15 years now. First put it in place in 2006. Certainly, you'll recognize that date. We were about a year before the world crashing around us. So we put a mandatory program in place. Our housing market fell off significantly, precipitously, crashed, and previous boards, though, kept the program in place. And while we didn't have activity going on, there will start, we're a project here and a project there that had approvals, but keeping the program in place kept those bones there for it. So we got back together with industry So we got back together with industry in 2010, right at the bottom of the world, if you will, and made a number of modifications to the program at that time responding to industry concerns. And just to touch on some of those points, we reduced the tiers where the workforce housing program was applicable. We flat lowered the requirement, the percentage requirement of units, straight up lowered them. We eliminated a requirement in, I always call them version one, version two, and version three. That's how I can keep my head straight. So I go to version one, we had a requirement that 25% of the obligated units had to be built on-site. We took that requirement away as well and moved some other pieces behind the scenes. I don't want to leave you with the thought that we were not in agreement and not open to having this discussion, A, recognizing the world we're in, B, knowing we needed to make changes. We're comfortable being flexible, hearing other ideas and responding and modifying them. So we did just that in 2010. So had that in place, and then we came about 2014, 2015, and I say that because it took that long working with industry and others to get to our 2019 approval, which was the version three, if you will, modification that took place. And again, that was the product of a lot of work through a number of years, working with industry on points. What we did in that most recent version, for those of you who are here, you will clearly remember it, but we modified how we price our in-lu fees. They were stuck in time and didn't reflect cost increases, so those are on autopilot right now. We did a lot of lever pulling on bonus densities and really cleared a path for 50%, 100% bonus density availability and got out of the way from a regulatory perspective on how they're addressed. We did everything we could to incentivize construction on-site. We have sought, took points where we've lowered the obligation percentages for single-family and townhouse to some degree, if they're constructed on-site, doing everything possible to get those done. And then we created the exchange program, so we're almost three years now in place with that. And that was another opportunity to meet your workforce obligation by which the market rate builder would team with, I'm going to call it the workforce builder, and construct units at a different location. I would argue that that opportunity was in code at the time. This really cleaned up how it was done, but it created yet another opportunity. So there's been a lot of progress, continue to make, continue to take ideas. I can tell you, as I go back in time, when the, it's, on the multifamily side, our early years, talking to multifamily builders and their lenders, and we talked to the lenders themselves. They identified concerns with not having a floor, if you will, as they try and run pro formas and understanding where pricing may go and as they try and value it and assign loans to it. We work with them, we wrote code provisions that worked with our lenders, with the lenders working on the multifamily projects, to identify and give them that certainty and that clarity. So we're always open to hearing things, but I would tell you, there is a lot more that could be done. Again, for those of you around, you might remember, we got together, maybe it was a year or so before we brought the final pieces home of the code changes. I think we spent a couple hours with you going point by point over a number of potential changes, and we sought your direction. Change this, don't change this, change it to this degree, et cetera. So there are a bunch of points there that could be done. I want to point out, and at the bottom of the slide, ensuring rates of return, every time we do this, we will not present something to you that has not been reviewed by our economic consultant and looks at model pro formas in single-family townhouse, I'll call it large lots, single-family, small lots, single-family townhouse, and multifamily pro formas. And we look at each one to ensure that through all of the different options that are out there, that it still delivers a market rate profit and then a capitalization rate on the multifamily side as well. So we'll, we've always taken your feedback, we've discussed it internally, we've walked away from a number of ideas through the years because it did not deliver on those points. And that was a hallmark from the first time we did it back in 2005 and 2006, and we're actually using, at that time, using a professor from Rutgers who helped develop that. We all learned a lot, I think, on the economic side of it. But that work is done also in consultation with talking to industry and understanding everything from the price of lumber, price of concrete, nails, land, labor, everything. All those inputs are taken along the way. So it's not, we don't, we don't do it in a vacuum. We certainly don't do it ourselves. We engage someone who understands this world and talks to our folks down here. They'll use nationwide trends, but they talk to our locals and really understand our local inputs as well. So whenever we brought anything to you, that is always there. If we ever brought anything in the future, we would engage in that way as well and deliver it. So just running through briefly about the past 10 years or so, the rental market, and certainly you're familiar with hearing the conditions that we seek, that we recommend to the board on comp plan amendments, and then it kind of falls in the background, if you will, when you see it on Thursdays on zoning days, because our workforce housing program just bakes those numbers into it. But we've created about 1,000 units of rental, about three-quarters of that, close to 750 are occupied right now, and then any given moment. You know, keep it in mind, these units all track with construction of the parent project. So we're in a hot world, we've been in insanely hot world the past six, seven years. Some projects come out of the ground faster, some move at different paces. Everything that we are talking about here tracks with those market rate projects and how they move along. So that's what we've done on the rental side, on the for-sale side, we're at two, over 270 units completed or under development. So, and those are, that's been exciting to do, and we've seen that in the townhouse product as well as a condominium product as well. So in-lu option is one of those options available to the developer coming through, and we've made changes and asked them in our most recent code change to identify that as the option they're choosing upfront. Previously, that was not the requirement. We have over 360 units through the course of time that have utilized the in-lu option. And then just out there in the pipeline, roughly 600 units are unbuilt, and the overwhelming majority of that is rental, and that's again in our world of tracking with the market. They will come to bear when they come out of the ground in the market. So since 2006, we've got obligations for about 2,500 units of workforce that have either been built, but that obligation exists out there. So I could run through a long list of changes as potentials, trying to condense it down to some of the higher points, and we're kind of going back in our minds to discussion we have at the board three years ago now, when we're making the changes to this version three. But running through some of the points, you know, eliminating the buyout option, identified 360 units that have utilized that option, over 360. The money we get from the buyout does not recreate that unit somewhere else. That's, that's not, you know, we're just running back-of-napkin-type numbers. We're investing 100, 150 grand a unit, and those are on existing ones, if you will. So our in-lu amount is not going to get you there. Implementing a flat rate, I identified that we have lowered our percentage of required workforce in each version, and we have a limited incentive option that even halves the lower percentages that we have in place that is potentially accessible to builders. So utilizing a flat rate is certainly an option that the board could contemplate directing as well. We could take the program back to a point where it goes outside of the urban-suburban tier. I would tell you that when you see projects coming through outside, we're applying the, we're recommending to you the conditions of approval that will have a percentage, but, and then applying the standards of the workforce housing program as well. But certainly the board could direct us to reinstitute applying it on a broader basis outside of the urban-suburban tier. The limited incentive option that I spoke about, again, that was created as we hit recession world in that version two. It's something that could be modified and baked into the concept, or we just did one consistent flat rate across the board that has that potential. And then you're really looking to incentivize to the greatest degree possible. I think there's a decent understanding, and we would certainly take the direction, that looking for for-sale units is our hardest piece to acquire. Rental comes along pretty well, rental is going to be there. Finding for-sale units has been difficult. We are very jealous and proud of our successes in that area, as few as they are, but we're happy with them. We would love to be a part of creating more, so that opportunity is out there, and the board could direct us to bring back those options. Last, I would always point out, whenever I've had these discussions over the past, again, close on 20 years, we are very open to hearing, what I've been open to hearing is different housing types and different ideas. We have built in the fashion that we built in South Florida, much less Palm Beach County, bringing different ideas. It's only been the past few years that we have dealt with a world of multifamily where they're contemplating parking structures and looking for densities in the 20, 25, 30 to the unit range, going to multi-stories beyond the three-story garden walk-up type world, which we're so accustomed to. But I think there's a world out there of single-family and/or duplex or combined housing of some sort that's in the for-sale world that could be broached. We don't get that input, and it's, it's, there's a catch-22 aspect of it. We could write a code that accommodates something, which cottage homes would be a great example. We had a square footage number on it, but we needed to go modify it because that didn't fit into what the real world was calling for. I would much rather hear the prompt from a builder saying, "I have this housing type. It doesn't mesh with your codes." We are more than open to working then, to making those modifications necessary. We need that prompt, though. We need someone to bring it for it. I'd rather work with a real project than create more in the theoretical world. So there's a lot that's out there that could be done. I will leave you with that point, but I would tell you that there is room to grow this program and have the opportunities to create a lot more units.
Thank you, Mr. Rutter. One question before I get to Vice Mayor Weiss. What is the average impact fee on a new construction?
I'm going to say, single-family residential, we're in the $7,000-ish range, and I'm going to contact somebody right now to confirm that.
I thought it would be about double that, but okay, very good. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. Couple questions. How are handle, how do you handle property taxes on these units? Is there, how are they, how are they assessed?
They're assessed as any other property.
So if you build, I mean--
Not on mic.
If you, so if you, if you build, you build a house for $500,000, you sell it for 250, will they be assessed at 250 or 500?
I think it's 250.
Sales price.
It's 250. Whatever the sales price is, that's the base.
And this, on our, on, when you have multifamily units, you have, you know, apartment complexes, and you have, let's say, 10% of those units are workforce, are in the workforce housing program. How are those, do they get any special tax assessment?
Again, I think it's based on the sales price. It's based on the sales price.
Okay. And then if we needed to, if, just to, on the workforce housing program, Mr. Rutter, if we, how many units are left to be built in the county?
That's truly a debatable point. You might look at it, I saw the story in the Sunset Inn the other day, and we talk about vacant land that's out there. But I think this board has seen a number of projects in the past few years where there's underutilized land that might have a handful of single-family units, property is aggregated, and you would look at it in the gross sense, there are three single-family units on 25 acres, something to that degree. So the notion of something being built out, which I think is where we might be going with this discussion, is a moving target. Vacant land, very, very scant and limited.
I guess where I was going was, is if, let's say, for example, you made a 50% requirement, so it would drive up the 50% that's not workforce, it's going to drive up that price significantly to carry, and how many units are you going to end up with? I mean, if you say we need 100,000 units in the county--
Over 100,000.
Over 100,000 plus. I mean, it, I don't know where you're going to build them.
I think--
And how your program is going to get us, other than nibbling around the edges of this, even at, even if you were to raise it up to 25% of everything that gets built?
Well, the workforce housing program is not, is not the sole solution to this.
Okay, so it's not, so that's not going to solve the problem?
No.
Okay, so then we go back to--
It is about density, and I think we've all been around long enough to see what has occurred in the city of West Palm downtown. West Palm City Place used to be affordable housing for people working in this building way back in the day. That property was purchased, those people were moved out, and the density continues to grow. We're redeveloping where commercial properties used to be, and they're now residential, except they are market rate residential, and the density continues to grow. So at some point, when we think we're going to be built out, we just redevelop, and it depends on what we're redeveloping for. So I think we're all at a point, and especially with the business community demanding that something be done, we all have to step back and look at, as we increase density, this particular board did allow us on some of our big-box vacancy kinds of places, Lenox, Lenox Square--
Lenox up in North Palm, yes.
Lenox and North Palm, even though we had the NIMBYism in the room, this board said, "No, move forward." And so we got a significant number of workforce housing units because the density was increased, and we require 25% of those units be affordable workforce. And so that's where we're going. When we're changing, and this is your administrator's humble opinion, but when we're changing density, land density, going through the comp plan process, that's additional density that we're giving. And at some point, we've got to ask for more workforce housing out of it. And I think one of the options that we're, worth asking for your consideration is to eliminate the buyout option, period. That's always been the fear, that we would have this pot of money with no land to develop it on, because we cannot compete with the private sector when it comes to purchasing land. We have restrictions that we have to follow when it comes to the purchase of land. We can't just pay whatever somebody wants us to pay. We've got to look at appraisals, we can only go over a certain, or should only go over a certain amount, and then we have to bring it to you for that approval. So we are looking at the, and hopefully this board will consider this recommendation, and that's the, to eliminate the buyout options, period.
But, and again, no disrespect, but I'm looking at--
That's okay.
--you know, residents that can't afford to pay their rent, their rents are being jacked up 40, 50% a year. I mean, and these are, these are thousands of people--
I agree.
Not, you know, and we need to be looking at this in a much bigger--
Absolutely.
--bigger way. I mean, we're, this is--
I 100% agree with you. You do not get an argument from me. I get calls at home on weekend at night, people saying, "I need help, I'm being put out of my place, I can't afford the new rental rate," and it has quadrupled in the last couple of years.
And no offense to our friends in the short-term rental business, but how much has that impacted us, too? I mean, you've got, so you've got, I mean, you've got a convergence of things that are, the market is doing, and our residents are asking for us to respond in a way, in a meaningful way. And that's the discussion I really want us to have, is, is how do we, how are we going to dig our way out of this?
Again, it is going to take the entire community working together. It is going to take our municipalities that are well-to-do, they're going to have to share the burden with us. It's going to take all of us allocating land, working with the school district. I had this conversation with a couple of superintendents. I've got to have it with the new one. You know, if there, if you, I won't say excess land, because we don't have excess land, but we may want to revisualize how we're looking at things. We are looking outside the box. I know that for South County, we're looking at how can we better maximize, do you still keep land for our purpose?
Correct.
But if there are other, if there's a portion of it that we can allocate for workforce housing, affordable workforce housing, we've got five acres that we've already identified in South County when we redo the plan. But we-- But we may be able to do some other things. We worked with one developer who had to allocate drainage for his development. We allowed them to pipe it, as opposed to just opening the big field, and then to use that field as part of their recreational requirement. So we are working with developers, developers, rethinking how we've done things. We will continue, as Patrick said, we're open, we're talking to developers, workforce, we're looking at Broward, we stopped in when we went down for another meeting at a project to say, "What are you guys doing? How are you doing it?" We are, we, we are looking outside the box, we're open, and we have to create new units. We, we 100% agree with you. But we also have to preserve what we've got. And one of the, one of the things, when we start to talk about, or community starts to talk about, "Well, let's look at land in the underserved communities." People are in there, and if we're not careful and we don't plan it properly, those individuals are going to be displaced, and the values are gonna escalate, and the rents are gonna escalate, and they can't live in there anymore. And those are the people that work in, work for us, government, private sector, and we've gotta, we've gotta look out, because St. Lucie County, what used to be our bedroom community, those prices are also escalating.
You can't buy a house for $200,000 in St. Lucie anymore.
No, you can't. And so when they, when their economy, their economic development takes off, those people living there are gonna stay there. They're no longer gonna commute back to Palm Beach County. So this is an issue that we, we're gonna have to make some really, really hard choices. We're gonna, as this board has directed, work closer with the Housing Leadership Council, come up with the plan, because that's what we're telling everybody, we gotta have a plan. And, and part of it is going to help us finalize exactly what you asked for, the number of units needed by AMI categories, so that we'll know where we're going and, and what we need to do, instead of just saying, "Hey, we're gonna build 2,000 units per year." Do we need 2,000 units per year, or do we need even more? And if we do, then should we be building two-bedroom units or three-bedroom units? Because we have single-headed household, they may have three or four kids. We cannot stack them all in a 700-square-foot studio unit, or we're gonna need more mental health and violence. You know, security. So it is, we agree, granny flats, we've got some restrictions on granny flats. A number of years ago, we came to the board, the board approved granny flats, but we had restrictions on them. We need to look at those restrictions, maybe we need to release them. If they're not granny flats, then we leave the kitchens in, and we allow them to rent at the lower categories. And so we're looking at that, and that is something that we will be, you know, bringing back to this board as an option as well. Because our millennials coming home from college, they may be willing to, to rent that granny flat behind someone's home. But as a community, we're gonna have to embrace it, so we don't have the NIMBYism. So I eat and sleep affordable housing and have for a while, and I drive staff insane with it. But it is getting worse. It really is. And it's a two-edged sword. We've got more upper income moving here, and that's driving up the cost. It's also driving up taxes. So that's another concern, and that is something that we're gonna have to also address. Because when people can't afford the taxes, they get foreclosed on and they're moved out of their community.
Well, and, and as, as my colleague said, I mean, insurance is, I mean, is also, is cost prohibitive in the, today for this windstorm insurance.
It's a complex issue, but we have to address it.
Honestly, that's where the, the single-family homeownership really, you know, starts to fall apart, is when you start looking at taxes, maintenance, and insurance, they become, even if you subsidize them, the, the purchase price of house, people can't afford to live in them, so that's why the rental market makes so much more sense, that you can put a roof over somebody's head. And they can actually afford to put out a third of their income and, and afford to live there and pay the rest of their bills. But you put, you put them into a for sale, even if you bought down the price of for sale, you add on all the extra costs and, and nobody can afford it. And the last thing you wanna do is push somebody out of their house after you put them in, because they can't keep up with the taxes and insurance or, and the maintenance costs that go on in, in a single-family home.
We, we 100% agree with you, but we also hear from businesses moving in with their mid-level managers, that they want units that they can, they can buy. And so I, I've got middle-level managers, I've got employees that have worked a long time, they wanna buy, and they wanna stay in our county, but they can't afford, it's just not here. And so it's, again, it's a complicated issue, and we gotta address it with everyone in the community. It's not one, it's not county government that's gonna solve this alone, it's not county government and municipal governments that's gonna solve it, it's gonna take all of us to solve this issue.
You know, we haven't seen the real effects of each side yet on the insurance market, and we know that's gonna hit. We haven't had the debate up here yet about what we're gonna do about re-inspections, since our friends up north seem to have decided that this is not gonna be an issue they're gonna address, and that's gonna add cost. So, yeah, to your comments, Vice Mayor, owning a place is getting more and more expensive. But we create wealth every time we increase density, and we need to get a piece of that back from the developers, and we need to have a quid pro quo here. And I am certainly a person who has not been shy about giving additional density, but I also think that we need to be exacting something back for that benefit. And, you know, we have very few things that we can bargain with, but density is one of those. And the density in the downtown, that's, that's million-dollar density. That's not something that's gonna solve the, the workforce housing problem. We need to talk about the density along Congress, the density along, you know, a, a lot of these, federal, along Dixie. And, you know, there are places in this county that can be redeveloped, and we can give density bonuses, and, but we have to manage that. And I'm with you, buying out is not giving us anything other than some cash in the bank, and that's not improving anything. You know, I lived through rent control up north, and that's not the answer. And I don't think that there's any appetite for that in Florida. And I get all sorts of emails now from people saying, "Why are you allowing these landlords to increase the, the rent?" And, and the answer is, it's a free market. And, and we can't just try and, you know, again, put our finger in the dyke and stop that. This is not gonna be something that we can answer today, but it's certainly something that is vexing. Commissioner Marino?
Thank you. Yes, I totally agree that we should eliminate the buyout option for developers. But we also, along with that, if they are building affordable housing, it has to be built along with the project, not as the last part of the project, because Avenue in the north end of the county is a perfect example, 20, you know, 2,400 acres, 3,000-plus units, 250 workforce housing units, they bought out, it was fine, because there was never, in the development order, there was never a requirement of when those units were to be built. And at the end of the project, you're, you know, you're, you're building something that's not gonna make you money at the end of the project, not at the beginning of the project. So if we are going to eliminate the buyout for workforce housing, and, and it is a development of size, there has to be a timeframe. I mean, if you build, if you build two regular units, you have to build one for, one workforce housing unit, not, you build all the regular units and then later on you build a workforce housing, because at that point in time, it doesn't do us any good. So that would be one suggestion, or, I mean, I might get, I might get a lot of developers yelling at me right now, but I'm sorry.
Commissioner, I would just tell you, we have timing mechanisms in our code right now to address those very points, for whatever option you may choose, whether you're building, whether they were doing In-Lu, whether they're doing the, any of our other options available, we have timing mechanisms and hard stops on them, they couldn't proceed beyond certain points without meeting their obligations.
Thank you, I did not know. I've only been here a year. I'm learning.
There's only 15 pages of workforce housing in the code, too.
Oh, my gosh, yes. So I do agree with density bonuses, but they should be like in the transit-oriented developments, because we, if we're going to add density, we have to add density where we can move people around. I mean, we talk about mobility, we talk about, Clint Forbes was here talking about Palm Tran, you know, we have Tri-Rail, we have a meeting on Friday. But we have to be building where there are options for people to be moved around by not getting in a car, because when we add density, like we're talking about in the Ag Reserve, maybe adding density for workforce housing units, what are we doing to the infrastructure? What infrastructure is there already, and what infrastructure do we need if we do that? So, you know, now, now it's also another discussion about zoning and land use, but I'll leave that for another time. And I think another thing that was thrown out was the increase in caretaker homes in size. That's just, that's minimal, but it would keep somebody in that unit who then doesn't have to commute. Also, I do, Verdenia, I do feel very much worried about gentrification of, of areas in our, in our community, because, you know, a developer's gonna go in there and offer a homeowner who's been there for 50 years or so, a ridiculous amount of money, and they're gonna take it, but now where do they go? They go live with somebody else, or they pay, they, they take the asset that they had and they now, you know, put that in rent or something else, and then all of a sudden, they don't have any cash. So we really have to be careful about, not allowing, but seeing what we can do about communities not being gentrified. So I'm looking at this, I have cottage homes on here, and I also have micro-units, but both of those would have to be in an area where you're not, you're not getting in a car, you're getting on a bus, or you're getting on a train. So I think those would be not necessarily questions, but observations. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Sacks?
I just wanted to get my mask off, that's all. The, I think Commissioner Marino really hit it on the, on the head when she talked about, and sometimes fresh eyes are good. We have certain corridors in this county, like Congress, military, Dixie, federal, that are perfect for public transportation. And these are the corridors that we, I'm sure you're already looking at. What, what I want to be sure is that we don't have developers who give us site plans for our approval that have 12, 1,250 units in a zoning area where there is no public transportation, but then they say, "Well, we're gonna put 250 workforce housing over here on the side." And what have we developed? To me, we've developed like, like a area where all the folks who can afford $1.3 million housing units will live in one section, and then over here to the side is going to be workforce housing. I grew up in Detroit, and I can recognize something, you don't have to, I, I, you can smell it, it's not good. And it should not be able to get past our smell test here in the county commission, or in any of our staff reports, 'cause this is not something that meets a requirement of workforce housing. Put them over on the side, in that area where either it's along an area that maybe we can't sell a $1.3 million unit. So I think we need to look out for this, because we can't afford this anymore. We don't wanna develop these types of, of, of communities where it's, it's segregated, it's segregated. And of course, with regard, as the mayor mentioned about property taxes and insurance, there are programs in the state legislature, there are, there are bills that have already been passed, with regard to working with the property appraisers, to make sure that, that housing that had been developed through workforce housing or through some other, you know, community grant or city, will not be subject to those, that level of property taxes as well. And we have to work on the insurance. Many times, citizens, the insurance of last resort, that doesn't apply to a lot of the areas west of I-95, but this is a conversation we need to have, so that we continue to support our communities that are already established. So I definitely, and I'll be talking to you, Patrick Rutter, about how do we eliminate the buyout? And how do we make sure that any developer, and I'd like to know at some point, not today, but some point, which are our developers who have been very good about working towards workforce housing, which is our, really, and Ms. Baker, you have brought this to all, this is all of our desire. So how do we, I'd like to know which developers have been particularly good about already doing this. I think that that is, that is significant, and we should note and thank them and promote them. But I think we need to be careful that we don't get these housing site plans that, that show us workforce housing over, how dare they? That's not, that's not the way it should be. That's not where we're gonna develop Palm Beach County team. This is not our county like that. So I appreciate, and I appreciate all this conversation that we're having on. Thank you.
I think it's important to stress that workforce housing is not sectionate, it's not affordable. It is housing that is for our people in the workforce. These are cops, these are healthcare workers, these are middle managers. And I wouldn't be worried about this, and I'm sure you didn't mean to say that we're segregating them into a section of the community, and I don't think that that's what is happening. I think what we're talking about here is the additional density. We don't need 4,000 square-foot homes being developed on one-acre lots. We need 1,800 square foot, or 2,000 square foot, and eight on a, on a, on a, an acre. That's what we're talking about. We're talking about utilizing the finite resource we have of land more effectively. And every time we have one of these projects in front of us, the neighbors come in and scream at us and say, "No, keep those New Yorkers back in New York, we like things the way they are right now." So we have to have the intestinal fortitude to stand here or sit here and say, "Look, we need to balance the fact that we want Palm Beach County to remain a suburban and rural community, but we can't just be ignoring the needs of our residents and of our businesses, because if we don't have the proper balance, the only thing that's gonna happen is these prices are gonna keep on going up and up and up, and the only people who'll be able to afford them are the ones who are moving here from New York with a pile of cash, the ones who are not getting mortgages, the ones who are buying these things on spec, essentially, without even looking at them. What's going on in this market is ridiculous. People are bidding up prices that are, you know, people think they're not gonna get the price, they ask for a, a house, and they're getting more. So it's, it's, it's a difficult problem, but we, we need to try and manage it. And again, the D-word, density, is really our tool in the, in the toolbox, but we have to get something for it. Commissioner McKinley?
Thank you, Mayor. I wouldn't support eliminating the buyout option, I would support exploring the ways we use the funds that we get from the buyouts. And I don't have all of the allowable uses in front of me, and I think we're going on hour eight here, so I won't ask you to pull those out. But we should, we should explore, because I think that sometimes there are, there are those, there are those developers in the county who are building in that market. Out in Belgrade, you know, workforce housing project is actually a market-rate project. And there might be ways that we can help use some of those funds we've gotten from the buyout to offset some of the site development costs that some of these projects have. So maybe getting a little bit more creative. You know, you talk about cops, and firefighters, and teachers, and nurses, and some of those professions, not our teachers, but some of our fire rescue, our law enforcement, and our nurses, I wish I made that much money. I've never been shy, I, I ran for office telling my story, and I'll keep telling my story. Your county commissioner qualifies for workforce housing. At least the last time I checked, I did. I think the oldest fell off the tax return this year, but I'm still supporting him, so it's kind of even more difficult. And I did come home on Friday evening, from two weeks on the road, to my annual lease renewal. And, and this is my third lease renewal, so over the course of three renewals, my rent has gone up 37%, and 25% of that is just for the coming year. gone up 37%, and 25% of that is just for the coming year. And I have now, because I was out of town, I have 48 hours to decide if I want to do that. And I looked on Zillow, you know, as commissioners, we have to live in our district, and so my options are either to suck it up buttercup and pay it, or there were two options in South Bay, and there was one option in Pahokee, in my price range. The other ones that were in my price range were in 55 and older communities, and I'm not quite there yet. Not far, but not quite there yet. And I find South Bay and Pahokee are beautiful communities, but that would be well over 100 miles a day to commute to my office down here, and we've got seven commission meetings in the next two weeks, that's a lot of driving. So I go back to what I raised before. You know, I am now, they, they talk about being housing-constrained, or whatever the, Jonathan, the correct word is, is usually your rent, your water, and your electricity. So between those three, I'm at 45% of my take-home pay. And I'm not supposed to be over 30%. And we, we do pretty well as county commissioners, it's comfortable, but, I mean, that's got to be probably 75% of our workforce, is less than that. So tell me, what options do we have right now to slow that rate of increases until we can figure out what to do? Are there emergency measures we can take? Is there legislative action we can take? I mean, what are our options? Because we're catering, we're talking about all these great businesses that want to relocate to Palm Beach County, and how can we make it more comfortable for their workers? Well, I want to take care of the people that live here right now, before I worry about making it comfortable for somebody coming from New York.
We've tossed this around for a while, and I'm going to look over at legal, because I don't think we have very many options. Again, the rent control was probably the only thing, and I don't even know legally, I'm going to look at Bob, I don't have an answer for that one.
There is a rent control statute in Florida, and it makes it virtually impossible to do rent control. And if you do it, it's by ordinance, it can only last a year, it has to be for an emergency. But there is some language regarding the definition of luxury housing in the rent control ordinance, which was created in around 1970, which makes it appear that you can't use it at all, because they've never changed the statute, and under their current, in the current market, all housing would be luxury housing, which is not eligible for rent control. So the legislature, back around 1970, basically tried to make it impossible to do rent control. So we can look at the issue, we briefly have looked at it in the last week or so to see if there was any case law, and all the case law is before this law was adopted, or right after it was adopted. So it appears no one has really tried to do rent control in Florida since around 1970. There is language in the rent control statute saying that inclusionary zoning is not rent control. So our, our ordinances are safe, but they did not, though Florida did not want a rent control.
Is there an opportunity, and this is late-hour thinking, is there an opportunity for us to create our own voucher program?
Turn your mic on, Verdenia.
That is something we could definitely look at, working with legal. And again, I mean, we definitely have to find a funding source. We are working diligently to convene a meeting with the Secretary of HUD. These are issues that will be on our list to discuss with her. Our goal is to also bring our neighbors to the south with us, Broward and Miami-Dade and Monroe, to say, HUD, here's the challenges we're facing in South Florida. And then possibly recommend some things to HUD to utilize these dollars in other ways, or streamline it, or change some of their rules that increase the cost of providing housing, so that we can reduce the housing overall cost. Some of these astronomical numbers are because we're adhering to guidelines set by HUD, and it's in general, and so we, we've got to address it. But we definitely can look at the voucher and see how that works, and see where we can go from there.
All right, well, why don't we also try to see if we can get a meeting with Secretary Vilsack, too, from USDA? Because some of the restrictions under rural development regulations prohibit Pahokee, South Bay, and Belgrade from being eligible for some of the rural development grants as well. And then the last thing I'll just say is, you know, the business community is waving their arms in the air right now, frustrated that they can't hire employees, the school board can't hire teachers, the restaurants and hotels can't hire workers, the hospitals are having nursing shortages, they can't come here if they can't afford to live here. And, you know, they, they, it's not any county regulation that's causing these rent increases. I mean, there is certainly no regulation that required that landlord to tell my friend she had to cut a $20,000 check to be able to move in and take a loan against her business, probably, to be able to do that. It's ridiculous, and something has got to be done, and everybody in this community, anyone who owns a business, who employs somebody, should be screaming about it.
Thank you. I'm going to go to Commissioner Marino first, and I'm going to let Commissioner Bernard finish this off, and hopefully, we can be out of here by 3:30.
Just a quick comment. You had said that the legislator was, legislature was not taking up anything on SURF side, but they are taking up a mandatory building inspection, SB 1702. So I just wondered, I don't want it out there that they're not doing anything, there is a bill out there on the floor right now.
All right, well, that's good to hear. I mean, after the governor's stated, a state-of-the-state address, where he basically said nothing about it, I was very surprised if anything was going to happen.
There is a mandatory building inspection with milestone inspections and some clarification, so I just wanted to make sure you have that information.
I certainly appreciate that. Thank you, Commissioner Marino, for correcting me.
Thank you.
Commissioner Bernard, bring it home.
We all need a home. Just, I didn't get a chance, I had a meeting at 2 o'clock, 2:30, so that's why I was out for 30 minutes. But I see some of the policy considerations that, you know, that 1 through 5. I know for me, I just, I'm not prepared to weigh in on any of these policy considerations. I believe that the issue of affordable and workforce housing is something that we all need to tackle, and we need to have the players at the table, and they need to be here, and for us to sit down and figure out exactly how we're going to address this workforce and affordable housing, we need to create a plan for housing, how we're going to create these housing units. And specifically, I know Ms. Baker mentioned senior housing. We've got to really tackle senior housing. How can we create those as soon as possible? How many units that we need, and how we're going to create them? So, and, but these issues cannot wait. You know, I don't think, I don't want to do a, another workshop, another charade, or anything like that. This is, we need to bring everybody at the table, figure out exactly how many units we need to create, create a plan, and let's figure out how we're going to do that. So I look forward to us having these discussions, and let's create housing for our residents in the county. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Bernard. And I think we've all recognized this is something that's not going to be solved this afternoon, but we also recognize it's not something we can just kick the can on. Mr. Rutter?
Thank you, Mayor. And mindful of Commissioner Bernard's comments, if the board would like, I can prepare, in the workforce world at least, I think I mentioned it earlier when we met with the board, to get some direction on a number of points as we were preparing the last bit of changes to the code. I can come back in February with an initial discussion of points. And I've heard a lot of topics today, some a little more dialed in, if you will, than others. We can do our best to coalesce around that, get your direction on some of the finer points. If we were to go off and make code changes, I've got a lot of steps afterward, which would include meeting with industry and other parties as well. But if I have an initial reaction and feedback, I can give you some more information, you can give staff some better direction on points, and we can go off and begin that process at least. And I think we could be back to you at the February BCC zoning meeting, if that's the board's pleasure.
Thank you. Commissioner, Vice Mayor Weiss.
Yeah, just as a follow-up to Mr. Rutter, when, a few months ago, I had asked, and I think we gave board direction, asking that planning staff look at areas where it makes sense to have additional density, taking into account all the good planning aspects that a lot of people have brought up today. Can we also get updated on where the status of that sits as well?
Yes, sir.
Okay, as Commissioner McKinley said, we've been at this for a little while today. I'm glad we all had lunch, so that we didn't faint.
Some of us had lunch.
Some of us have. Well, Madam Administrator, you're not a good time manager.
They just keep me working, what can I say?
Okay. Unless anybody at the board would like to have a final word, I see no one racing to their buttons, we are adjourned.
Thank you.